It may help us in the long run because, you know, they'll be able to maybe run it to full capacity, maybe. But I had that tennis who may be agreeable to say right on you it's going to be dumping for ninety dollars a ton. And that's gone for pastings to go on. Which I didn't particularly like that they were paying less than our residents are going to pay.
Yeah.
They sure be that, you know, they would be at some point paying the same. Should be paid more.
They should be paid more, that's my opinion.
Are these still hauling up to XL to have them burn?
Yep, XL and one XL. And then XL still has the ash pit right next to our van.
Yeah.
But they dump all the ash in.
So if XL were to say, no, we're not, we don't want to do that anymore, then we get to put in an incinerator of twelve, fifteen million, whatever.
Yep.
And then that gets tapped on.
Yep, and that could, I mean, XL has already closed a couple of their plants that do that. Whether they haul it to, you know, I don't think, I mean, other counties like Olmsted County, I think you can't bring anything from outside the county. As far as the rules. Would we see that in our ordinance, I guess? I don't know if I'd push to get that in or not, because I think if they're running at full capacity, maybe it would say, well, it's not even long run, maybe. Maybe not. Generally, just because of the, you know, the more you got, you know, maybe more efficiently indeed.
So we'd like, I guess, at this point, is just a motion asking or directing staff to send a letter to Goodview County with the city's concerns and, I mean, we have this down, pretty much burned into my brain here after almost twenty years, so. I mean, we, it's the same, you know, it's mostly cost, you know, issue, I mean, it's basically cost. But I'd like to, just on the record, since there's a hearing in February, um, February eighteenth, I think. There'd be, there will be, there's a public hearing at the, it's at the, in the, you know, the county boardroom on the third floor of the government center in Red Wing. Um, February eighteenth at five P M. in the commissioner's boardroom on the third floor of the Goodview County courthouse, Goodview County Government Center. So anyway, I would like to send a letter from the city, you know, tend here into the record that, you know, we have concerns with the, you know, requirement that all the waste is hauled to Red Wing and that, you know, we've got questions on cost control and we have questions on, you know, unknowns as far as our current hauler. They have a contract through the middle of next year, so, you know, on one hand, they could petition us and cancel it. But they haven't indicated they're going to do that by any stretch, I'm not saying that, but otherwise, they're locked in until the middle of next year. They can come to the city and ask for an increase, but I mean, right now, the price is set by the agreement. So once that's up, though, we don't know what they're going to come back with. And, you know, Tom, the city's had a, the last five years has had kind of an interesting run here with solid waste haulers. Um, the city operates a utility, solid waste utility, so basically, we contract for residential. Commercial is just up to the, you know, individual to whoever they want to use. Uh, they have to be licensed by us and the county, but all the residential is, you know, one hauler and they have a license or agreement with the city. So we kind of went through a retirement from, um, Grols, the, you know, I don't know if you remember or if you knew, that's where you got to town, when Grols, um, was a company in Canyon. Um, he retired, then he sold out to Waste Management, so we had Waste Management for a year and then we got rid of them. And then we used, um, from Cannon Falls.
Gibson.
Gibson, thank you. And we had Gibson for a couple of years and then Gibson got bought out by Waste Management. And then what happened is the council said, we're going to open it up again, because there's a lot of concern with Waste Management. So then we ended up with Flum and Flum's been excellent. We haven't had the issues we had with Waste Management, we haven't had mixed, missed pickups, things are very smoothly. But the concern, the main concern for the city here is just the cost factor. You know, is the hauler going to want to add, you know, thirty percent or twenty percent? We don't know. In Wanamango, they have Waste Management, Waste Management said that they weren't basically going to increase rates because of this. But we know that there's going to be increased rates at some point with that. And just realistic, you know, reality is that the costs are going to be higher with this requirement. Because right now, Flum goes to, say, Race County, um, they go to places a lot closer. So they're going to have to take all the waste to Red Wing or the transfer station, whatever, but it's all going to end up there. And one question Barney had, doesn't the city, though, have a contract with an XL for that burner for so long that?
Yeah, I don't, I haven't heard that they have a twenty-year agreement.
But they have, I thought they had some kind of a long-term agreement with.
Some kind of agreement.
Because the city put in a, that big, um, shredder, yeah, shredder, thank you. And so that processes everything before it goes to the burner and they spent a ton of money on that. So I think they had to have something in place with XL or I don't think they would have gone through with that. But anyway, we have, and we've actually sent probably a year or two ago, a similar letter that I would send again, but it's just kind of a, just an overall letter that we've got concerns and, you know, talk about aspects of what our concerns are. So I just like a motion authorize a staff to send a letter to Goodview County that we have concerns with this solid waste ordinance, so.
I think that'd be a good idea, really. Barney, is, um, have you talked to any of the townships out there? Are they going to send any letters or represent themselves or?
They haven't, you know, they did last time, you know, they all sent letters and some said they're not going to do it. You know, so I mean, it was City Januson did that, um, so I don't know if everybody's done it this time again. But I think it's a good idea.
I still want to make a little sound something.
No.
I would move we direct staff to send such a motion.
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made, second, to send a letter to Solid, I'm just using Solid Waste Management.
To Goodview County.
For Goodview County, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye as a pass.
Well, I'm sure, I think, um, as far as that business part goes, uh, there is county monies, you know, for fixing, doing County Twelve in that section. So there is a lot of money for that, so if you guys know that, I would, um, so just be aware of that, that might be a way.
We don't know a lot about it, but that's what we're going to talk about at that meeting, so.
Yeah. Any other questions? What's going on in your county here? It's been lively lately. Yes, you probably read. All right, thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barney. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll go on. This has been, it's down under old business yet, uh, this has to do with the Canyon Barn Grill with the gambling, uh, change. And I believe, uh, city attorney?
Thank you, John. Can I ask you one?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Um, and Mark had received that counterback, um, relative to the approval of the, um, ability for issuing or having a charitable gambling operation. And the state did not like the ten percent being noted in the resolution. I honestly, I'll tell you, I've seen this in other resolutions, the councils have approved in other cities and I've not seen it be a problem. But what was requested is that be removed from the resolution, which you can do, and be adopted, so you approve the charitable gambling, uh, operation. Um, we do not have an ordinance in place. State statute does say we can put an ordinance in place, it says either certain amount of dollars have to be spent in the trade area or ten percent can be distributed to the city for the operations, just like we were talking about during the resolution. We do not have an ordinance in place, so I, I guess the argument may be from the state is they didn't like that for that purpose, I don't know. Um, the bottom line is, we approving the resolution is fine without that condition. Uh, you've had other operations that have contributed locally as well, term charitable gambling that they're doing. There's no reason this entity couldn't do that as well. You could force the issue on everybody by adopting an ordinance. I'm not sure we're recommending to do that at this point in time, but that's certainly an option if you want to do that. Um, or you can do nothing and not approve it, that's up to you as well.
Could we have a letter sent from behalf of the city, from your office, to the gambling people? Asking for clarification as to why this is an issue?
One of my colleagues, when I was out, spoke with somebody there and they just were not in favor of this and that's what it sounded like. I don't know beyond that, um, sometimes this changes because different people are in the office at different times. Uh, this often happens in the liquor control area as well in the state, the interpretations are different. Um, again, you can say to the entity, we're approving this resolution, but our expectation is the ten percent spent or is provided to the city. If that's not done, you can adopt an ordinance and it would immediately occur, that would, that would be the result that they'd have to do. So you can force the issue if you want to do that, that's the reality. Um, yeah, beyond that, I, I, sure, we can send another letter, I'm not sure that's going to do all that much.
The problem with the ordinance is everybody would be subject to it and I don't, I wouldn't recommend doing that.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing.
We've got.
I think you had voluntary before and you've been fine, that's what other folks are doing. Again, you have the control, you can say, well, I have an issue if you're not going to do something. Uh, but you can force the issue through the ordinance. I don't know that that's necessary because you've had other folks doing that.
Well, the thing is that the beauty, um, the current charitable gambling whole licensee organization pays, I believe, fifty percent rent. And so we put this kind of requirement on them, I, it, they probably got a lot of their, it's like twenty-five percent, I mean, it's ridiculous. So I would not recommend doing that. But Sher, the state gambling control representative said that they would, if the city's going to put this in a motion, they want the city, per expect, the city should have an ordinance. And that ordinance, I don't think that's the way to go with this, so I would not recommend going that direction with it. Um, this was brought up because, and Merk brought this up, Alex is here from the Canyon Barn Grill. Um, so I don't know if you have any comment on this, but basically, Merk brought this up. They said that we would pay you ten percent, pay the city ten percent. They could, it has to be used for, you know, charitable, uh, charitable, it's got to be used like a donation. So it's basically got to be targeted or used, say, for the fire department or public safety or whatever, with some specific tangible kind of project. So they were the ones that brought this up to, to the city, we didn't like for, you know, suggest it and ask them to do it. Um, but basically, without, you know, an ordinance, if you want to approve it, you have to just approve it straight up without the ten percent. That's, you know, the best way to put it to you.
And the ten percent was really brought up by me, because I made the organization to, hey, Doug, give something back to this town because you can't just come in here and free all, how can I, how do I see it? So that was not really a guideline, that was something that I put in the motion as an idea, like, hey, give something back to the town. Even though she's done that in the city, anytime, you know, I've done anything for, you know, my other barn, St. Paul, they go above and beyond, where they still donate the ten percent and like I was telling Mark before, like, you know, every year, we even donate to certain families that's in need or whatever. Every time I pick one, they go above and beyond and they had me find another one and they take another one. So they always go above and beyond what that ten percent is supposed to be. But the biggest problem the city had was, they said when they get minutes and it looks to them like, hey, it looks more like bribery, it's what it looks like, not really a donation. And they're like, we do not want to see this, even though every city has their own implementations, they still want to see that because to them, it's a red flag. So.
I think that's fairly.
Yeah.
Scott, how would you word that?
Well, we have a resolution prepared, I don't know if you have a copy of that, but it would just, as Mark said, approve it without that ten percent requirement. So the state, state department. So, and a simple rule of that would might take care of the issue.
Is there a way we could have, um, some sort of, something a little bit more official between the city and the Canyon Barn Grill and leave the state out of it, just about the ten percent?
Okay. You could, but then it kind of goes through that gray area, if I ask that too.
Yeah.
It goes to the area where are you pressuring the certification to give you something or not, preventing it to others. That's why I was trying to do that, because the money that I've been using was at that place, I'm pretty sure you guys know that whole, all right.
Right. Yeah. I just, you know, the way I look at it is, um, you know, the, what do we have? We have the, the VFW and they pour, they pour all their, uh, proceeds back into the community. And then I think is it the snow?
Snow drifters.
Snow drifters, and I know they make quite a few donations and so it, you know, so it's just a, I mean, there are things that, like, you know, like the dollars that would come in locally, we could use that to, you know, beef up Rose Fest, we could use it to buy supplies for the fire department, all things that are going to help, you know, the, uh, your business as well as the, the community as a whole. So, um, I just don't want that to get lost and.
Yeah, that's, I agree, I don't want to, you know, make the other ones have problems too. They've been an easy, free reel going with it, they donated their money where they wanted to, I'd like to see you do the same thing.
Yeah, I mean, I agree a hundred percent, it should go wherever the city needs it the most.
Yeah. And Dan, to your point, that's where the ordinance requirement comes into play and that's what the statute authorizes it. You can say, yes, we have to do this, sure that you're relying on the representation.
Sure. Well, then, you know, the ordinance, though, can, that can get to be onerous.
No, I, I, that's why we're not recommending you that.
Yeah, then we're sitting down there coughing beans at the VFW club in the liquor store to see if they.
We don't need to be.
No, we don't need to be.
And that's what I say, no, I, I, it's not a recommendation from our.
Is this an issue that if, if, let's say, and I, I fully trust you're going to do this, but let's say that it, it didn't. Is there, has the horse left the barn or do we have any recourse after that?
No, you always have a recourse from the standpoint of they are operating within the community, it has to, anybody that's operating there, if it's something you don't feel is in the interest of the community, you can remove that approval.
Anyway.
Yes.
Okay.
I was told it was over six months when I called the city.
Yeah, it, it could be earlier, but the city wants it.
If they follow the commitment, you gotta say, hey, you're following the commitment, we're pulling it.
Okay.
Kind of as easy as that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, this is resolution number twenty twenty, do we have, what is it, O two or?
Uh, it'd be O three, I think, or O two.
Well, we got another one here, O two already, so this would be O three. Be O three?
Yeah, it'd be O three, yep.
Is there any more questions, Tom? Anybody have? City attorney, you got any more to add to?
No, I'm not, I, any recommendations to, to move forward, adopt this resolution and have that approved somewhere?
Mark, do you have something to add to that?
No, no, I think the fact that it can be reviewed every six months or whatever, then, you know, they don't do what they say they're going to do. You know, we have recourse.
Well, is that, I don't see that in.
Well, you can't put it in.
We have that in the.
That's just in the stamp, in the stamp.
Okay. Now, we could, right at the end, say bribes are accepted. No, it's not.
That's only for individual health, no mercy.
Probably not.
Richard, we're glad you're back. We missed you for a few minutes.
It felt like I was, you guys down here.
If there's no more discussion, I approve resolution, we move with the approved resolution twenty twenty dash O three. Do you have a second?
I have a second, Joe.
Okay, motion has been made, ten seconds, to approve of resolution number twenty twenty dash O three. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye as a pass, okay, got it done.
And Mark just want to add another, I mean, if you guys had questions or concerns or anything, I'm always there. Swing down, wherever I, if I don't have the answers, I'll get them, because I know where to reach out to, so. You guys know where I'm at? Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Austin.
Thanks. Thank you. Okay, moving on to new business, which is not a resolution. This one is twenty twenty dash O two, a resolution authorizing acceptance of twenty nineteen donations.
I just have a question, this is donations to all departments.
Yep, this is just a blanket authorization, I said, accept.
This is just a normal yearly thing we have to do.
Yeah. If the statute you have, you formally accept any donations for the mission.
Okay, how move our approved resolution twenty twenty dash O two?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made, ten seconds, to approve of resolution twenty twenty dash O two, uh, which is a resolution authorizing acceptance of twenty nineteen donations. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye as a pass. Okay, so this will make Goodview County mutual aid fire service agreement.
So, this is a agreement between the, I guess, larger cities in Goodview County. It's just a kind of a renewal of a previous agreement that was in place, I think, for a long time, but it's just a prototypical uh, fire mutual aid agreement. So, you know, it's pretty much just kind of a boilerplate thing, but. Is there any questions on any of it?
I would guess this is pretty much an annual approval.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we do it every year, but I think the last one, I don't know, I mean, I think this was updated in some areas to reflect current, you know, legal and.
Yep.
Kind of things like that, so this could be in place for ten years or even longer.
I'll move approval of the mutual aid fire services agreement.
Second. Okay, motion is made, second, to, on the Goodview County mutual aid fire service agreement, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye as a pass. Okay, moving right along. Uh, replacement of the street sweeper, Wayne Eric, the courts director, would you like to speak?
Yeah, switch, you know? So, with our current street sweeper, um, starting to show the age and we made a significant amount of repairs to it last year and there's still some more repairs to be made. And then also, last year and the year prior, um, with N U A, our safety group, they partnered with Minnesota OSHA consultation on the silica dust, um, testing. OSHA was trying to develop a silica dust standard and they didn't know, they kind of reached out to the safety groups about where's the dust coming from, you know, does, what activities create the dust? Street sweeping was brought up and I volunteered us to be a part of the testing group for that. And then, um, come to find out, um, we are of high exposure with our sweeper for silica dust. So, like, for instance, they have a twenty-five, uh, microgram per liter action limit. Our first test result was two hundred and thirty. Our second one was ninety-six. So since then, we've, we had a, a training that with the company and we made some repairs. And now we're bumping down to, um, twenty-two and twenty-six, so we're still right at that action limit. So I would pursue, um, trying to upgrade our sweeper to a new style. Um, like a two thousand and eight newer, has a sealed cab. And through this testing, the studies have shown that the silica dust exposure is dramatically less in that new style cab than our current style that we have. So, um, with that, um, we would get a trade-in value of twenty-five thousand for our current sweeper. Um, the OSHA guy did hook me up with, uh, Minnesota, uh, the safety grant, but we were awarded a ten thousand dollar safety grant this year. So we had that to go towards it. So and then the few pictures you got are examples of kind of something in the base range that we're looking at, about that hundred and thirty thousand dollar range, give or take a little bit. And then, like a, a brand new one's two and a quarter to two fifty, depending on options. So I think we could find a nice used machine through McQueen's. They do a, a full inspection upon trade-ins and then offer a warranty afterwards.
Then you had, I think I, at, uh, four o'clock, I got copies of, of some examples of numbers on it, so I put those in the packet. You guys probably saw those, I mean, I just stuffed them in the front there. So you can kind of get a idea of, you know, probably the area we'd be looking at for, you know.
So right now, this is just kind of like, um, I'm asking you a blessing to go ahead and start kicking tires and looking at replacements. You know, I'll come back in February with, uh, you know, with the intent to purchase, because the, the grant money does have a timeline on it. Uh, it's got to be done by, uh, May tenth, otherwise you have to give the money back.
So thirty-five thousand, the trade-in plus the ten thousand dollar grant to go towards it? And where's the other money?
Well, what I propose is we would do a, we'd do a lease, uh, five, six year at least, somewhere in there. And I'll have some, you know, numbers on, on that. We don't have this in the budget for next year, but what we would do is one of two things, either capitalize, if we could do this, um, capitalize, so the first payment would be till twenty-one. Otherwise, we would just take it out of, um, out of capital, you know, out of the street department capital. And there's, you know, I don't know, two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars in there, so I mean, the first payment would come out of that, so we. And maybe there's a way we could fit it in the budget, I'd have to look at that, but regardless, that's what I would recommend is that we would do a, we would do a capital lease on this, that's what we did with the last one and, um, that would allow us to kind of ease it through. And so the impact on the budget would be kind of, if we could capitalize it, then we could put it in the budget for twenty-one. And if we decide not to capitalize it, just make the first payment, we can, um, either take it out of the budget or take it out of capital. I would probably recommend taking it out of capital, this equipment, you know, comes out of capital, so I mean, it's.
So the yearly lease would be in a thirty thousand dollar range, probably?
Um, well, okay, so if we bought one that would say a hundred and, say just for discussion, a hundred and thirty, um, five-year lease would be probably, yeah, twenty-five to thirty thousand range, probably, yeah. Somewhere in there, I mean, I could look at, I don't know what we did with the last one, I don't know if that was seven years. Um, I'm thinking for some reason it was five or six, but, I mean, we have flexibility that way, but, um, I would say I would probably stay within, you know, five to six year range, even though hopefully we'll have this one longer than that, but, you know. And these standards that deal with the particulates, the in, you know, the, you know, the.
The respiratory.
The respiratory, those are new, fairly new, they were just adopted in twenty eighteen.
It's still in the development phases, they're just kind of doing the research on what's creating dust and what activities do it. And they even tested, um, some towns, they just, they swept out their shop and some towns failed just sweeping the floor with the garage doors shut down, so they were experimenting with sweeping with dusting down walls. Um, they had guys on lawnmowers, they were testing them, um, I think they're testing like, uh, crack filling on streets, all sorts of activities, it was just, it's so broad and new. And they're treating this silica dust exposure is kind of like on the same line as asbestos.
Well, one thing that, I was down with Wayne Monday, that was Monday, wasn't it, we talked to Tony on his here? And I did learn a lot of information from him too, and also a little bit of knowledge I have, which you filled in on that. And looking back at it, uh, with the sweeper we got right now, with these new ordinances coming in, our sweeper is going to be useless into the future. So right now, they're offering us twenty-five thousand dollars for that sweeper. I well think we should seriously consider getting rid of it. Number two, and may, actually, it should be number one, is the health of the employees. This year, let's say, they come in with these ordinances and we, we've got the. Let's say they come in with these ordinances and we, we've got the employees out there working. They get sick, we're all responsible. So I'm saying this year, I think we should go now, as quickly as we can, buy a sweeper that is up to compliance. I, I heard Tony say on the phone there that they go through all of the different components on them and they will actually give us a guarantee, a warranty for a certain amount of time after we went start with the sweeper. We don't use it in January, when it goes. I was very impressed with him on it and the points that he, that he brought out. Now Wayne brought up another good point was, and I'm familiar with tractor cabs on tractors on the field, which he pointed out to me how easy it was to be able to see where you're actually working instead of the older style ones that were, the windows that were there. There were so many different things, soundproofing. All of these things are into these newer sweepers. And I did ask, I says, what about, you know, let's say 18 and 19, a couple of years old? And the words were, they're not available. And if they are, they're pretty well already spoken for. So I says, this is the area of years that are still available and that they're coming in as trade-ins. And what's this 13 here? That he did hold it for, what, 90, 40 days or 20 days?
A week or two.
Oh, is it?
A week or two.
Yeah.
Spending, some, a lot of the, see, they get, I think he said they had like 30 brand new sweepers. And then a lot of towns are like on a straight up 10-year trade-in program. So they buy brand new ones, they send their stuff that's seven to 10 years old back out into the market. A lot of the stuff they have online is either on hold, sold, or, um, so this, these were three examples that weren't spoken for as of yet. They did have some older models which are very similar to what we currently have, which we wouldn't have any interest in. So this style sweeper.
Basically, we're looking at $100,000. We got 35 already, 25 for the sweeper, 10 for the grant. And there's a limit on the grant timelapse.
Yeah.
That we have to make.
Eight 10s, it leaves any problem if I make 10 dollars, you have to give the grant back.
So if we get on in February, we'll be fine.
What was that?
If we approve the purchase date next month, we'll, we'll still have two months to get the grant together and wrap up, so.
But where would, let's say that we chose one tonight. How do we go about confirming that we want that?
Well, I think we just, you know, how long will they hold something for us, Wayne?
Um, I think they would hold it for a while. As long as there's a pretty solid-
I think they had given us four weeks before. They did.
It's like when we bought the Jenner truck. We had issues because when we were, when we were looking at replacing the Jenner truck, uh, we had a list of six, eight trucks and we would, all right, we're interested in this one and he's, all that was gone. So I think the best bet would be to look at what they have and put something on hold with the intent to purchase before they're bought. Because this is, I mean, this, McQueen's has got a four-state area and I think everybody's playing in the same situation right now. They're reviewing what's coming in for trade-ins right now before the sweeping season picks up in spring thaw, April or May, or whenever decides to happen.
What if we authorized Wayne and Mark and maybe mayor to go through the process of finding a machine that fits our needs and our budget and bring it back to February D?
Yeah, that's basically what we're kind of asking for. That's exactly what we're asking for.
Then that's my motion. I'll second that. Okay, motion has been made and second for Superintendent Erie, Administrator Mark, I'll say. And maybe the mayor to look into purchase of a new machine that's going to, or a machine that will work for the city, street sweeper. Y'all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Won't be long, you guys will be wearing masks.
Well, with this year, it will be if, I mean, if OSHA just keeps, yeah.
Well, the idea was to put something in place where you didn't have to. It's not like, uh, they provide masks, they may not be worn, but if you jump in with this new style machine, it would be an issue.
Yeah, the cabs in these newer machines are basically completely sealed and-
The cabs are wider, they're full blast. Right now that, we got a fishbowl, you can stick your head out to look through. The new ones, the cabs are wider, makes you the classroom in front. So you don't have to hang your head out through the door to see. It's just, we, we actually test drove a brand new one this fall. And the, these new styles are very similar to the brand new ones coming out. And it's not different. The drive is-
Actually, the cabs are separate, separate from the machine itself.
Yeah.
And that, they're, literally, they aren't shaken and rattled like the rest of it is. They're nice and solid, which will help in the long run with all of the gaskets, everything else with it, glass, whatever. It's just going to be a better environment all the way around. Okay, I think they've got everything pretty well done then. Going to other business. A schedule of upcoming meetings. KMU meeting will be Wednesday, January 22nd at 6:00 PM. That is a new date. Landing permission meeting, public hearing is Tuesday, January 21st at 6:00 PM. Red Wing Avenue Information Meeting is Thursday, January 23rd. And that'll be from 5:00 to 7:30, or 7:00 PM. And then the EDA Annual Meeting, which will be Tuesday, January the 28th at 9:00 AM at the Kenyon Bar and Grill. And then SEMA Annual Meeting, Thursday, July, January the 30th will be in Rochester. Are you, are you going to go into that?
Um, yes, I see my line, yeah.
And then our regular city council meeting will be Tuesday, January the 11th at 7:00 PM. February 11th, I should say. What did I say? January. It's on February 11th at 7:00 PM. And that's it for that. So, is there any other questions on, I didn't think I had a second? If not, we'll have council and staff, general comments. And I'll start out on the left side. See if you have anything to say.
Which is interesting, 2020, we started a new decade here, so. If you think back on everything that's happened over the last 10 years, Mark, I don't think you were-
Here 10 years ago.
I wasn't here either, so, but let's hope 10 years from now we-
Matter of fact. Oh, yeah, I forgot about you.
It's, it's something when you think about a decade, how much it happened over the 10 years, so. Well, at least we're starting off on the right foot, looking forward to working with you for the, for at least the first year of the decade and hopefully the rest of the decade beyond that.
Sure. How about you, Mark?
Happy New Year and look forward to very busy upcoming year with everybody.
Okay. Well, I'm saying this, Richard invited you back. I like to hear it.
Yeah.
How about you?
Um, I'm just glad you're back.
Good, thank you. John?
This garbage business just never ends.
So I've been dealing, what's it?
Ever since I got on the council, five years ago.
And the last time, I mean, since, I mean, since the last time.
Yeah.
And it'll get more and more complicated.
You just think we get it solved? We go with Gibson?
Oh, I know that one.
We get it solved, go with Flung?
Yeah.
But they aren't ready to cause us a problem.
No.
But I mean, it just-
Besides, yeah.
I think we got rid of our problem this year.
Maybe we should succeed and start our own little county.
How about you, Dan? Uh, Richard, good to have you back. Good to have a full board. And happy new year to everybody.
Thank you.
John, how about you?
Yep, happy new year, everybody. And January is radon detection month. And Minnesota's got a pre-spoken deal on it. $10 radon detector for, I just ordered one today. It's my normal.
Anyone else have something to say? Okay, well, then how about getting on to adjournment? Putting his baby to bed.